First item of business, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Oh, still approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to nothing, special reports.
Actually, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Drummond.
I know, refreshing voice, Eric. So, wanted to update council on the progress of several of the different recycling programs we have out there. And Paul put on the screen our, the new household hazardous waste electronic recycling program. It's called Waste Management at Your Door. Now, what we did previously for household hazardous waste, as some of you recall, every other year we would do, have a collection event at Public Works on a Saturday, and we would contract out for that, and also have Public Works employees help out. And then for electronics, what we would do is have residents drop off televisions and computers and electronics at our Public Works facility. That had to be done during working hours, which was 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And so what this new, no, new, excuse me, new program does is you, there's no extra charge for residents, they're already being, paying for it through the bill, and you can go online through WMAtYourDoor.com where the phone number listed, and you can schedule a pickup right at your door.
You can go through the app, PT for Me as well.
Okay. It probably directs you to the, yeah, okay, yeah, it does have to be through the Waste Management at Your Door, but it's separate from Waste Management, the regular garbage or recycling collection trucks, it's a special truck that comes around. And so we do have a breakdown in the report that's in your docket. We had a total of 1,605 stops in 2019 with over 90 tons of hazardous waste and electronics recycled. And now, most of those were televisions, most household hazardous waste recycled material was paint, which, which is typically the case at our events previously. But it's a good program, and we've heard a lot of positive feedback on it. Certainly, you know, gives an option for residents, instead of telling them to wait for a future collection event, which might be a year or two in the future. Couple other recycling programs we're offering, the cardboard compactor and the glass recycling container. These are both behind fire station number one. The compactor was installed at the beginning of 2019, and some confusion, you can still recycle cardboard curbside on what you can fit into the bins, but if you have a large amount of cardboard, or for small businesses that don't have a recycling dumpster for cardboard, you can take it to the compactor, and that's been successful. We've had over 35 tons of cardboard recycled. We've emptied it eight times. So there is a cost per haul from emptying the container, Waste Management services that for us, but we are looking into a grant to purchase our own receiver box, and then, I believe, bid out the hauling costs, so we might be able to save some money there. But it's definitely being used, and our Public Works Fire Department does a good job keeping an eye on it to make sure it's, it's up and running. And then, as you guys know, with the glass recycling, which we've talked about, we've partnered with Pennsylvania Resource Council, and it's a pilot glass recycling program. So there's no cost for the township for the dumpster, we are paying for it to be hauled away. We did start that January 13th, and since that time, we've emptied it four times. So it's been, yeah, nearly 13 tons of glass has been recycled in that, so it's been successful. We are applying for a grant to cover 90% of the purchase of our own two 30-yard glass recycling dumpsters. So should we receive the grant, we'll solicit bids for the hauling of that material. And then, as Mr. Lauer had, has shown here, these, all these flyers are on the website, and more information can be found on the website, but they're definitely, residents are definitely taking advantage of the, the programs, which are, which is good, especially the glass recycling, there's been a lot of, a lot of buzz about that, so. And hopefully the new, I know there's some discussion about the height of-
Little people, that's right.
Right, the openings, but I think with the new, the containers we're looking to purchase, we'll make sure the openings are a little, you know, a little easier to-
Vertically friendly.
Yeah.
Tom, I have two things that come up as questions, and I think it's several times during the course of a year. The first one is, when we used to have the collections over at Public Works, there were a number of bicycles that were turned over and reconditioned. I mean, it almost brings tears to my eyes to see kids' bikes out at the curb, or human adult bikes that are just being trashed. Now, a lot of them get captured by the unknown pickup truck that comes through our neighborhoods every, every season, but it would be interesting to see if there is some, some way to deal with the-
And we actually, that, we're still recycling the bicycles, that's through the cleanup day event, which is April 25th. So you can still drop those off at Public Works, either leading up to the event, or the day of, and I believe it's Mr. Shader still has a group of volunteers, and they refurbish them and donate.
I wasn't aware of that. And the, and the second one is, those people that have things like dehumidifiers, or other elements with Freon in it, I knew of a place, I think it was on, down on the south side, that if they took them there, they would take out the Freon.
Right.
But do we know any more about what the option consists of?
No, I mean, you're right, there are places that will take the appliances. We tell residents to have a heating or cooling company take the Freon out. Waste Management will take those, or at least they did curbside, they just need that official sticker that the Freon's been removed. So, we don't, you know, certainly don't do that ourselves, or recommend a certain company, but we, you know, know-
It might, it might be helpful to the residents, though, if we could list the available options, or if there's more than one.
At one point in time, we actually had a list, so let's see whether or not we can revisit that.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would tell you, I've used that four or five times. It's so easy, it really is a big convenience, and they show up when they say they, they are, and, and you're right, when you go through PT for Me, it directs you to Waste Management.
Is scheduled online?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions for you. The, the glass recycling container that we get now from whoever?
PRC.
PRC. How big of a recycling container is that?
Thirty yards.
In fact, the interesting thing was, when PRC contacted me about placing a recycling container here, they suggested that they would bring out a smaller container, and I suggested to them that, that a 30-yard container could be the appropriate size, because I think the volume is there. And sure enough, we're filling that up, you know, every seven to 10 days, and so that's the appropriate sized container.
That's why I'm saying, why, why, first of all, why are we buying, getting a grant to buy two of them for one?
Well, the reason why you would buy two, one, the, the cost of them to the township will be relatively minimal. Though, that hauling of this container is more expensive, because you're asking the truck to come out empty, pick the container up, take it to the recycling center, and bring it back. And so if you had a container that it was substituting in, your cost would be substantially lower for the ongoing cost of recycling it.
And, and is there any way that we could reduce the haul of dumpster costs? Because I mean, this has been doing, what, for, for like a month, and we've already spent $1,700, if I'm reading that right?
Right.
Four twenty.
Four times.
That's seven, what is that, 1680 for, you know, four dumps? And now, that's a lot of money. It may not seem like a lot in the scheme of things, but, I mean, that was my concern from the beginning, is paying for those costs.
And, and I don't know how you escape that. I do think one of the things that will happen, you know, there aren't a lot of these containers sitting out right now. A lot of the municipalities were afraid to put these out, not because of the cost, but because of what they believe will be a problem in terms of maintaining them, and, and garbage and things like that. PRC's committed to having these out in additional communities, including communities in the South Hills. I can't tell you how much of that glass is coming from Peters Township, and how much of that glass is coming from our neighbors, but the more of these, these that are out there, I think, can only help us. But I, one thing about Peters Township, this has always been true, we, we had drop-off recycling here long before it was required that we be a mandated community, and this community supports recycling. And so I'm not completely shocked that people are making the trip and dropping off.
I think it's a good investment, too.
Thank you, too.
Great. Next item is audience-
Before you move on, I do have a second special report, and I know it's not on the agenda, but-
Are you allowed to speak, then?
Well, I, I want to share some good news, I think. As council's aware, we're trying to move forward with the Rolling Hills Drive project, particularly the intersection, East McMurray Road for Rolling Hills Drive. Last Friday, we opened bids on this project. The apparent low bidder is A. Liberoni. Liberoni Incorporated is the firm that did the upper part of the roadway, that the contractor doing the earthmoving for the high school. We also had experience with Liberoni in Peterswood Park, they did the softball complex. We have been very pleased with their work, they're easy to work with, and they do quality work. That price of $2,379,000 is substantially below what we have budgeted for this in, in our budget. We have a number that's closer to $4 billion in our budget for this. So this represents a significant saving, not only for us, but for the school district over what we had anticipated spending. The other piece of good news, I think, and it's the reason I'm bringing up, Mr. McCasick is here from HRG for another item on the agenda, but he is a principal within HRG. And one of the things that we have been working at with both PennDOT, the Washington County Conservation District, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, is getting this project permitted. And I think, based upon our meeting last week with DEP, we are confident that the design that this price represents is in fact what we're going to be able to build. The comments that we are left with from DEP are more administrative in nature than they are substantive in terms of what design criteria. DEP understands our timetable, they've also explained to us that we should understand their regulation. But I do believe that we're going to be able to get the permits in place in time enough to get this project underway, and hopefully have the construction completed as the school opens. These bids will be on our, our next agenda, and we will be taking, well, we're suggesting to council to take action on awarding those, so. Anybody has any questions?
Good news. Okay. Now, we got the audience comments. Anybody in the audience that has a comment on a non-agenda item, please go forward and state your presence. Anyway, Mr. Shader, how are you doing?
Hi, my name's Anne Chaner, 123 Robin Hood Lane. I hope it's okay to take this opportunity to invite you all to our Suffragette Tea on March 8th, 2020, and it's going to be held at the George Washington Hotel, and it's for everybody out there, too. And we are doing a little march, too, and we have these sashes that we've made, and they're embroidered, okay, votes for, because that's what they wore, so we made them look vintage, and I think it's very, you know, appropriate that, I'm going to give this to Monica, since she's been around a lot, she likes to come to the summer and watch just tea. It's nonpartisan, okay, so anybody can come, and we're having music and everything, and you can come in period clothes, too, okay? The only business I would like to address is, I missed the last meeting, I could not attend, because I had a sick friend I had to take care of. But anyway, I was wondering, at the meeting, you know, when we had the reorganization, you know, there was that discussion, because I felt strongly that Monica should have been given a chance for chairmanship. And I was wondering, during Mr. Lewis's comments about the budget, she wasn't the only one that I think voted against the budget, unless I'm wrong about that. Yeah, you voted against it, so I just was wondering why Mr. Steigl was not mentioned, you know, when those comments were made.
He was. We had quite a discussion.
That's why I followed up, followed up on the meeting.
Well, okay, I, but, you know, because it was noted that that's why she shouldn't have, or he was making a point. It sounded like he didn't want her to be chairman, because she votes against things like that, and I'm thinking, well, what's that mean for Steigl's? I mean, like, you'd never vote for him, too, you know, so it's just something to make note of, all right? I'm in a good mood.
We would have already voted on council members way before we get any discussion.
Well-
That's, so, I don't-
Doesn't matter.
I construe Mr. Lewis's comments as, if anything, other than what they were.
Well, I was here, too, and I construed them as that, okay? So if I did, I'm sure other people did, too. Okay, thank you.
Ron Books, 855 Bevout Road. I circulated a article that appeared in a recent Wall Street Journal, talking about the, the Asian epidemic that we're currently dealing with, the coronavirus. And if any of you have been keeping the issue on the front burner through our news agencies, you're realizing that it is spreading substantially throughout Asia, and for that matter, parts of Europe. Now, according to the news clip, anywhere from 40 to 70% of the population could be affected by this particular organism, this virus. That's a substantial amount of people, of course. And the fact is, there are, there currently is no inoculation available to prevent anyone from developing this particular form of flu. That makes it extremely dangerous, because you can't personally take any step to prevent it, other than to stay or remain isolated from contact with other people, which works. But the point I'm trying to make is, I'd like to ask our township manager and personnel to begin thinking about how, again, thinking about how we could deal with this, if it reaches our shores, well, it already has reached our shores, but if it turns to a pandemic in this country, there will be not only a loss of life, but more importantly, it will put a lot of our professional, uh, policy and, and lifesavers, our police, our fire, it'll put a lot of them out of condition, out of, out of order. And my understanding is, it takes as many as a month to recover from this, so it's not something you get over with in a week or two, like you do with a cold. It's something that remains with you for a substantial period of time, and is disabling. This will put a heck of a strain on our resources, our food, water, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be reasonable to think ahead of time and develop some contingency plans to deal with it, should it reach pandemic levels. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ren. Okay, anybody else? Moving on. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, first item under new business is a consent agenda. Tonight's council meeting includes a consent agenda containing four items. These four items can be approved in one action, rather than filing, you know, through each motion as we pick it up. Now, the purpose of the consent agenda is to move the routine items along quickly, so the council has more time to discuss other issues of importance, this may require discussion. So, the items on tonight's consent agenda are a resolution approving signers on checking accounts at Washington Financial, an agreement authorizing the appropriate township officials to access Washington Financial online banking services, an agreement authorizing appropriate township officials to originate automated clearinghouse transactions, and a resolution amending the Peters Township drug and alcohol policy. Now, are there any items that a council member would wish to have removed to discuss separately?
None here.
No.
Okay.
I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Clear that. Resolution authorizing parks and recreation fees.
So, in the docket is a resolution amending existing parks and recreation fees. These changes fall into one of three categories. The first is to kind of codify existing practices, which includes a definition of what constitute a resident team or group. The second is to codify how we handle the fee associated with sports associations, bringing in private contractors, and offering camps within our facilities. And finally, for the past two years, the Parks and Recreation Board and council have approved special fees at a lower rate for the WPL and PIA sporting events, and rather than I bring those back to the rec board and council each year, these would be codified inside the ordinance. The second part of this is an update of current fees. All of these have been reviewed and recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board. So, the first has to do with after-hours use of the facilities. The rate that we charge right now, $20, doesn't cover the cost of the people who were there manning that facility, and it's being proposed to be increased to 30. In the manager's report, you will see there are changes in the outdoor shelter fees, the stage fee, and then finally, when Ms. Harmon was here the last time, she was explaining that they would like the opportunity to be able to rent out park facilities that don't normally fall into the rental program. So things outside of shelters and the stage, large areas within the park or the trail, and they, the parking record has, has established a set of recommendations on fees based upon the size of groups, so.
Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I had sent a couple of questions in to Mrs. Harmon with Mr. Lauer earlier, because, not that I object to the fees increasing, as a matter of fact, I'm an advocate of trying to have fees paid for the operations, but I was trying to get a handle on why they were increased, because it's very inconsistent. There's some that are 56%, some that are 400%. She assured me in my, in the reply, that they went out and looked at comparables, what other people rent, the, the usage, and that the parking rec board apparently feels that the numbers are not going to prohibit people from renting it. My concern was, are we making it too high, and will we lose rental? She feels that they feel, her and the board, feel that these are legitimate. So, the only other thing that I wanted to get a little bit more clarity on was the WPIL and PIAA as a flat fee, and her remark on that was that, what I took from it was that it generates goodwill. Is there anything more that you can add, Mrs. Harmon?
Well, actually, if you recollect the first time this came through, both Ms. Harmon and myself did not support the idea of a reduced fee. The Parks and Recreation Board, however, feels that there's a certain level of recognition and prestige associated with hosting those events, and therefore had recommended to council that those fees be set at that. Like I said, if, if, if it's going to be council's position that where those fees are, is where we need, that we will continue to charge them, then we ought to codify, instead of bringing it back for an exception every year, and every time there's an event inside the park.
Well, mildly, the response she made was, there's obviously an advocate on the parking rec board is involved and supports that, and the rest of the group-
Yes.
-agree. And so, you know, I, I, I don't understand the goodwill part of it, I don't really know. You know, maybe some of the people who've been more involved with the sports could tell me what that means, but-
Yeah, because, I mean, it's-
No, I'm asking a legitimate question. I don't-
It is a legitimate question, but the, the reality is, it's, it's, they want our facility because it's a, it's a beautiful facility.
Oh, I know that. I know.
It fits what the WPIL and PIA want, and, and we get goodwill out of it, because, you know, it's in the newspapers, it's in the sporting pages, it's talked about, and it shows our township a good light.
The one thing I think you need to keep in mind about all of these fees, is that this is not a hard source of revenue for the township.
No.
It, it, you know, the entire year, the rentals for, for shelters doesn't bring in $10,000, so, you know, having said that, there are expenses to having those shelters, and we do have Public Works employees that come out on weekends to be able to maintain the restrooms and clean the areas around the shelters.
Well, two things.
It's not, not any different, like, various country clubs like to have golf tournaments. The West End opened at their facility, because it shows them a good light, gives them good marketing work.
Yeah. Well, and I can appreciate that, like you said, it was just that everything else went up that that didn't, and I was trying to understand the rationale. But to Mr. Lauer's point, I, I think that it makes sense they go up, the fees go up a little bit, because we've obviously built some really decent shelters with a lot more amenities. And as far as usage, if people were asked to come out, the shelter should be functional, and if people have to be called out to get them repaired on the weekends, then we have to-
Well, it's not to be repaired, it's to be serviced, so-
Service.
You know, when, when people get done with the shelter, the garbage needs to be emptied, the restrooms need to be cleaned between Saturday and Sunday, and that, that, there are Public Works employees who do that.
Well, one last thing, I did ask if we could track what the revenue was last year, and then after this year, compare it and see if it went up or down significantly, or the number of rentals changed. So I think that would be a good way to see whether or not it had a negative impact. So reluctantly-
It's a good idea, but I think you're going to do it more than just one, one year.
Well, I don't disagree, I'm just saying as a beginning. So reluctantly, I will move to approve the recommended resolution 020320, amending the Code of Ordinance, Chapter 195, Article 8, Section 28A, parking rec fees as presented.
Well, I'll second Paul there.
Okay, other discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. I noticed in here, Mr. Lauer, that there are a couple areas where they, they talk about nonprofit, nonprofit resident, nonprofit non-resident. What determines whether a nonprofit gets resident status or not? I mean, if I'm a member of a nonprofit LLC, but it's not, it doesn't have a principal pla, you know, it has a corporate address in Timbuktu, does that give them a resident status?
Well, it's, I understand, what's proposed here is that 60% of your membership needs to be township residents to be able to qualify as a, as a resident organization.
That's the question I had.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven to nothing. Approval for recording purposes, Venetia Point, 2019, final plan, shown on drawing is prepared by Cobalt Professional Services, dated November 7.
So, Venetia Point Development, a 33-unit townhouse development located off of Venetia Road. Currently, 17 of the 33 units are constructed. What you would be approving tonight is a subdivision that would provide four additional lots inside, inside of this plant. That's kind of a architectural rendering of what those units look like.
Now, this is the one where last year, was it two years ago?
Now, this is the one where last year, was it two years ago, we approved the plan taking the lots away, right, because the developer didn't want to pay the real estate tax?
Yes.
And so, now we're putting four of them back?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the Venetia Point 2019, final plan as shown on drawings prepared by Cobalt Professional Services, Inc., dated November 7, 2019.
Just a second. Okay, discussion?
Well, I think it's important to understand that this development certainly has struggled, I think is probably a good word. It started way back in 2007, based on the notice we've had here, and it's taken a long, long time. So, kudos to the developer for being able to endure all through that.
I did have two questions, just to clarify. It says thirty-three total. I was a little confused because the picture in the docket and the picture in the manager's report are different in that there's a pond at the front entrance, at the very lower end by Venetia, shown on the one.
It's a detention point, it's a dry basin.
Right. Okay, so there will be thirty-three non?
Correct.
Thirty-one. And then second, Mr. Zemitis probably remembers a while back when they built the original group, that the road paved in at the top of cul-de-sac that existed there, and there were some repairs that were required. And their proposed construction is on the hillside of that cul-de-sac above Venetia. Will there be engineering required because, again, it's a hillside, we're in Pennsylvania, to make sure that it's stable enough to hold those up?
Well, when the plan was originally developed, they addressed all the geotechnical issues, they routed the area, and I'm not aware of any problems down there since...
What I recall about the cul-de-sac, because I think it was the San Stryer sewer trench that settled a bit.
We talked about the geotech on this thing at some length when it was originally approved.
Yeah, I don't think any of that settlement was due to a geotechnical issue, I think it was just poor compaction of the trench.
Well, that'll be a discussion further on then. Thank you. Sorry for blocking that.
Other discussion? All right, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, doing some work for market projects.
All righty, six-zero. With one abstention. A request by HRG for a change in scope for work related to the design of the Rolling Hill Drive project.
So, at the February 3rd workshop, we began a discussion with council concerning the change in scope associated with the Rolling Hills Drive project. Mr. McKasick is here tonight. What I thought we could do, and in your docket there is a chart that lists all of the different items, we could go through that, and between Mr. McKasick and Mr. Zemitis and myself, we can explain exactly what it is we're talking about. So, one of the things that was in the original RFP was that HRG was responsible to develop a subdivision plan. And one of the things that occurred was that the school district, to be able to get Department of Education approval, needed a subdivision recorded early in the process. The idea always was that we would develop the properties, address all the issues and concerns, and then do the subdivision. But the Department of Education would not permit them to move forward unless the school was actually located on a piece of property they owned. So, we directed HRG to do the subdivision, and that has, of course, been approved by council. Since then, the right-of-way lines that were recorded in that plan along East McMurray Road had to change because PennDOT has directed that to occur. They've asked that the lines be adjusted to reflect what is the proposed grading on that site. And so, we are going to come back at some future date to revise that and re-record it. Also, when we were dealing with the church, we needed their assistance in being able to do the realignment of Center Church Road. That was only possible by being able to approach upon their property. What they had asked for in return was a conservation easement behind their cemetery. That has to be incorporated into the subdivision plan that will be recorded at some future date. So, and the fee that's associated with, the proposed fee associated with that is twelve hundred dollars. Based upon an agreement with the owner of 265 Center Church Road, the township traded a ten-foot strip of land, actually owned by the Peters Township School District. In exchange for a piece of right-of-way, we needed to be able to do the realignment of Center Church Road. So, that small area that is circled there was a piece of property that we needed. That ten-foot strip of piece of property owned by the school district that was part of the house that was torn down, quite frankly, is of no value to the school district or the township, and if anything, would only result in a maintenance problem. If you can see the outline of his home, had that strip not been given to him, the school district property would have been very close to the edge of his house. So, to be able to do that, there was a requirement that a drawing be done and that deeds be prepared, and that's part of what HRG did to be able to transfer that. That, of course, no one could have envisioned that as being part of the original request for proposals. You know, in fact, one of the things I think you need to keep in mind when you're looking at this, and that I think is quite frankly rather remarkable, we had to do, deal with twenty-three neighbors on this project and get their permissions to proceed with this, and tried to do that in a timely fashion. This was just two of those neighbors, the church and this adjacent property owner. The property owner, we had to get eighteen property owners along East McMurray Road to sign releases. And all of that was done with tremendous cooperation from the adjacent homeowners. We ran into a challenge at 440 East McMurray Road, and that has to do with the fact that in this particular case, this home is to be reconnected to East McMurray Road. And if you remember the drawing, this is beyond the barbell, this is beyond the cul-de-sac area. And if, what you see in this drawing is that this driveway sits at the, at the top, at the right-hand edge of the property, and travels as far to the left-hand edge of the property as possible, and that's because of the incline associated with the driveway. This picture actually doesn't do justice to the change in elevation. This property owner was very concerned that he not be left with a situation where he could not turn out of his driveway and make a right-hand turn. As it is right now, his own existing condition is such that if, when he comes out of that driveway, he goes into the other lane to do that. So, when we were working with him, it became apparent that the only way that we were going to satisfy his concern is to have engineering drawings that actually showed what in fact could be done to adjust his driveway. HRG was directed to develop two different alternatives, which he looked at and considered. The thing that I will tell you is, this involved not only sketching these, it involved sending out survey crews to establish what those elevations were. This work would have had to have been done regardless of whether it was being done to get these releases, it would have had to have been done as part of the construction because there would have been no way to actually bid this project, including this readjustment, without drawings of this detail. And like I say, there were two different relocation options chosen, provided the resident, it was this, it was this alternative that was actually chosen. We talked about this in part of the workshop, we had, early on in with PennDOT, we were told that we would not be required to provide crosswalks and ADA compliant ramps on either side of the intersection project. That was removed on a prior change of scope, and the township was credited for that in the amount of forty-eight hundred dollars. In a subsequent meeting with PennDOT, we were told that the crosswalks and ADA compliant ramps would have to be placed back in. All this does is place that amount back into the contract at the amount that was previously So, that's a drawing of what this crosswalk's going to look like. The original scope of work recognized that we would require permits from the Washington County Conservation District. It also assumed, however, that the project would be done as one, as one construction project. So, therefore, there would have been one submittal to Washington County Conservation When the decision was made to take this project off of line, this off align, alignment was something that we recognized would take a considerable amount of time and effort to get approved by PennDOT. In fact, what we have been told by PennDOT District 12 is that this project, this realignment under a highway occupancy permit, is the largest highway occupancy permit that has ever been done in District 12. So, that gives you some idea of what the scale of that is. Rather than to take a chance that the project, that the roadway could not be constructed in this year, a decision was made last year with council's approval to move ahead with dividing this into two projects. So, if you go out onto the site right now, you will see that from Center Church Road down to kind of where that red line is, the roadway is currently constructed and is in fact being used by construction vehicles to access the high school. As a result of that separation, a second set of drawings needed to be prepared, and a second permit needs to be obtained to proceed with the intersection project. That is all, that has, that modification to the original permit has all been submitted to Washington County Conservation District. They have recognized it as being a complete submittal. We are anticipating within the next thirty days the approval of that, of that permit. When we went down to see Penn, the Department of Environmental Protection in December, we were all surprised, HRG as well as ourselves, that what would be required is a comprehensive environmental assessment. And the reason why we were surprised is that DEP could not point to another project, a land development project in southwestern Pennsylvania, to where this requirement had been applied. When we asked for examples from elsewhere in the state of Pennsylvania, they could only appoint to a pipeline project which was being done in the center of the state. So, this comprehensive environmental assessment was not included in the request for proposals in the scope of work that was defined therein, and no one could have anticipated that. I will say to HRG's credit, and particularly for Ryan, who works for Jeff, when we found this out, we found it out right before Christmas. Ryan worked through all of Christmas to be able to have this back into DEP by mid-January, and it, quite honestly, it's a result of that, that effort that we're now in a position with DEP, that what is left to be able to get our permits are more administrative changes than it is substantive changes to the design of the project. When, when the school district began the design of their project, they did so before we had from, from PennDOT an approved design for the intersection. And if you recollect what HRG's initial charge was, tell us whether to build a roundabout, or tell us whether we should have a signalized intersection. This idea of relocating East McMurray Road is something that came after the school district had proceeded with the design of their project. So, one of the things that, on the school district site, is that as you come in off of East McMurray Road, there will be a driveway that is to the left that will take you back towards the student parking. And with the realignment of East McMurray Road, it shortened the distance between when you turned in off of East McMurray Road and that driveway, and which resulted in the need to prohibit left-hand turns off of Rolling Hills Drive into this driveway. There would not be sufficient stacking to allow cars to make that left-hand turn. You would have actually backed traffic onto East McMurray Road in the morning, and nobody wanted that. The school district wanted to be able to make left-hand turns, and the only way to do that is to create a stacking lane, a third lane. So, this third lane configuration was not part of the original design. It was done after we had moved quite along on the project, and it required HRG to go back and, and do cross-sections to be able to accommodate this, this additional design, so. And then finally, there is a change in here that relates to the geotechnical engineering, and as, and Jeff may be better explaining this than me, but as I understand it, in a standard HOP, the level of investigation and reporting is at a level that is less than you would have if in fact this was a project being done by PennDOT. I believe because of the scale of the project, what PennDOT has done is insist that as part of our application, that the geotechnical investigation and reporting be done at a level as though this was in fact a PennDOT project itself and not a project done by the municipality. So, that's an explanation of each of the items. Like I said, Jeff and Mark can answer any questions you might have, so. One thing I should mention, you know, this change is for forty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. And like everything that's on this project, this, this is being shared, that expense is being shared with the school district. So, the change to the municipality is twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars. I have spoken to Mr. Rau about this, Mrs. Manager for the school district, he does not have a problem with that change. Yep. If council has any questions. If there's any questions you may have or if you need any further explanation, I can try to provide that.
Very good explanation, so, what we asked for, very thorough.
I'll make a motion that we approve the requested change in work for HRG.
Second. Can you approve the second? Any other discussion?
No, I'd just like to thank Mr. Zemitis for answering my questions I had sent some prior to the meeting, just because obviously I'm not an engineer, he helped clarify some of the areas. Thank you for that.
It's my pleasure.
Mr. Zemitis is always clarifying things for me because I'm not an engineer either, so...
He's extremely...
But we have an engineer. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Award of a contract for custodial services.
We have bid a contract for custodial services. There was only one bid. This in a way didn't surprise us because this was the situation that we had the last time around. The reason why we believe you only had one bid is that in the past, ServiceMaster has priced this very aggressively. That's not the case anymore. I think if, based upon a twenty-nine percent increase in this fee, we owe it to the township to go out and rebid this and find out whether there's additional interest.
I move we reject all bids for the custodial services contract and direct the township manager to rebid the same.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Award of a contract under Pennsylvania Co-Stars for Cooperative Purchasing Program to... Award of a Contract Under Pennsylvania Co-Stars for Cooperative Purchasing Program to TriStar Motors to Purchase Cab and a Chassis.
And we're gonna talk about both the 6F and 6G together because the, the second is an award of contract for the truck body that goes on to that cab and chassis. As part of the 2020 Capital Improvement Program, $130,000 was appropriated to acquire a new crew cab with a utility body and crane. And although ours will not say people's gas, that kind of is what that truck will look like. The purchase is being done under the Co-Stars program. The cab and chassis is being offered by TriStar Motors at a price of $53,735. The truck body has a price of $58,830. And again, it's being purchased under the Co-Stars program through Stevenson Equipment Company, so it's gonna be my recommendation that council award contracts to TriStar Motors for the cab and chassis and Stevenson Equipment for the utility body.
Discussion?
Paul, a vehicle configured this way, I would typically characterize as like a mechanic's Is that what our road departments considering this to be?
Well, yes, because we have, right now, we have one vehicle that's a crew cab that has a very small crane, not a crane quite this size, and utility boxes on it. And that's what they take out to the job site. It carries sufficient number of people and all the equipment that they need to do a job. Mr. Hurson would like the ability to be able to send out, you know, a second crew that's fully equipped with everything they need when they get to a site, and that's what this is intended to do.
Would this be intended to also then get involved in snow removal?
I do not believe this vehicle would be suitable for snow removal.
There's an item listed though that says heavy-duty snowplow front package.
But I, well, I have to talk to Mr. Hurson. I'm not sure about that because I don't know how this, this, I can see that this vehicle might be able to do snow plowing in parking lots, but I can't imagine that it's gonna be out on the road.
It would probably be prohibitive as far as the gas to get out of the road. And this is, we do need to make a done payment because this is going to be an extended, it'll be built, so we won't be having it right away, will we?
No, this is five or six months down the road.
So, this is an addition to the fleet? This isn't a replacement?
This is an addition to the fleet, but the one thing that I expressed in the budget workshops and I've spoken to Mr. Hurson, there is a vehicle that is being used by the park maintenance supervisor that was scheduled to be replaced next year and my explanation to Mr. Hurson was that we would be holding on to that vehicle for the foreseeable future rather than replacing it. There's not a need to do that.
Well, I mean, I'm still a little bit concerned as to why there's a need to supplement this. I mean, so he can get more people there. We have all those trucks. Can't they just throw in another truck if they come down there?
But it's not only that, you're, what you have are pickup trucks. What this, what this allows you to do is to have this truck stocked with the tools needed to do jobs out on the road and, and not have to, to, you know, load it up and, and things like that in the morning. That's what this is intended to do. That vehicle that we have right now does make a difference in terms of getting people out the door and getting a job done, and that's what Mr. Hurson's trying to do.
Well, the, the, but the, the one you talked about earlier that we have, is that's all loaded and ready to go, right? And it could do the same work and we've never needed an extra vehicle before, or am I wrong?
There is one vehicle like this. What Mr. Hurson is suggesting is that a second one is appropriate.
Okay, why? Is there, is there a double need? I mean, is there something else we can work on two projects at the same time?
We can work on more, multiple projects at the same time, and that's what this will facilitate.
Do all of them require a crane though?
They, you know, I asked Mr. Hurson about this to understand what the need was. And part of it is for, you know, things like setting catch basins, removing lids, setting metal decking over, over holes and things like that. That's what the intention of that crane is.
But we're doing that now with the existing vehicle, correct?
That is correct.
Or are we contracting that out?
No, what you have is a very small crane on the other one. This one has the capability of lifting far more weight.
So, is this a, go ahead, Monica.
So theoretically, we're going to get more done work, more work done because more crews can do.
That's what Mr. Hurson believes, yes.
But then let's make sure.
Well, does that mean that when the next pickup truck needs to be switched out, that we just don't replace it, or is it gonna just be a permanent additional?
Oh, that's what my point is, that we're not replacing, we have another vehicle that was, prior to this, was scheduled to be replaced and we're not replacing that.
Ever?
I can't tell you ever, but it, for the foreseeable future, we are not replacing that vehicle.
Yeah, we've been giving, approving a lot of things for public works on the basis of replacement, and I think it is good if we look ahead and try to dial back on some of the things, if we're gonna duplicate some things. So, I would agree with Mr. Cozer that, and Mr. Currie that we need to do that.
Well, my concern is that we have X number of vehicles now, and apparently we have enough vehicles, but now we're spending, you know, over $100,000 on this vehicle. I wanna make sure that next year we're not, or even two years from now, we're not buying another pickup truck. Because as far as I'm concerned, we have enough vehicles now. Whenever, whenever the next pickup truck gets to the point where we don't, we can't use it anymore, then we dispose of it, we don't buy another one. You see what I'm saying?
I understand.
Because of what you're saying, Lisa, what I understood is, we're not gonna replace that vehicle, but it's still gonna be in the fleet, and that's fine as long as it's still usable. But I don't want them to come back in two years and say, well, that pickup's not usable, we need another pickup. Because as far as I'm concerned, they have enough in the fleet at this point. So, if we're buying this, the next time a pickup goes out of service, it just goes out of service. It doesn't get replaced.
And that's a discussion every year in the budget, you know, so.
Wasn't this in the budget?
Yes, it is.
It's in the budget. Any discussion?
I agree with Mr. Cozer.
Do a motion.
I'll make a motion that we award contracts under the Co-Stars program to TriStar Motors, Inc. for a cabin and chassis in the amount of $53,735, and Stevenson Equipment, Inc. for a utility body with crane in the amount of $58,830.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. All right. Award of a Contract for the Purpose of Undertaking Emergency Repairs to a Traffic Signal Located on Route 19, the Intersection of Water Dam.
So, since November of last year, the traffic signal at the Route 19 Water Dam intersection has failed three times. It has now been determined that the cause of those failures are deteriorated wiring that is under Route 19. So, this would not be an inexpensive repair to do. The signal itself went in in 1989, so you can appreciate that this signal is quite old. What Traffic Control Equipment and Supply, the firm that's been our traffic signal, taking care of our traffic signals for the last 35 years, is recommending is that this signal be rewired and it be rewired above ground. And we, and to be able to do that, we can move ahead with that for a price that would be much less than simply rebuilding the whole signal. The, the number, and I think it's in the, the doc, is about $36,000 to undertake that, that repair. I don't know that you have a lot of choice here. One of the things that is happening at the same time, under the Green Light Go program, PennDOT has a project to replace the controller in this box. That controller's been there for that length of time. We're gonna go ahead and have that done under that project because there's, it's, it's matching money, but I don't know how we don't go ahead with this other.
So, when you say it's gonna be above ground?
Mm-hmm.
Does that imply it's hanging over the intersection?
Mm-hmm.
We can't go through, use the existing, they can't call it a way?
They do not believe that we're gonna be able to do that. One of the things that's happening on all the signals along Route 19, PennDOT's right now involved in a study to do adaptive signals, entire length of Route 19. I have no idea how long that's gonna take to do.
We've been talking about it for five years anyway.
Yes, so, what, what would be a mistake, I think, is to expend all of the funds needed to replace this signal. The one thing we could look at, although I think we need to do these repairs now, is to look at another Green Light Go grant to redo that entire intersection, but that won't be inexpensive.
So, how's it?
What's the difference between, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, how's it failing? What is it showing greens in two directions?
No, it's actually going black.
Oh.
Is this that one that we, we had the problem with the generator, the back one?
This is, this is the one that, that can't take a generator.
That's what it is. It's really, I remember we talked about.
What's the difference in cost between the both?
You know what? I don't even know what it would be, and I don't think that they can necessarily tell you that until they attempt to pull the wire back out of the conduit. What they fear is, and there's no way to know this for sure, they fear that the conduit may be actually crushed, and that's what's causing the, the problem with the break in the, in the wiring. The other thing they said is, you know, we're dealing with wiring that's, you know, how old and, and, and they're not sure. But I don't think we can leave it this way.
How does it work again?
Because I think they've temporarily wired it above ground in one section.
Okay.
So, did you say $36,000?
Well, I thought, I thought I had.
It doesn't say in the, in the, can you say that's interim? So, it would be interim until the state decides to do something?
It would be interim until either the state decides to do something or we go in and redo that.
So, this is just for wiring? It's not new controllers or?
What it's gonna get you is above-ground wiring, the control box in which the controller actually sits is deteriorated. That, that item alone's about $20,000 and then some other minor work. The other thing, when it gets done, there'll be a new controller put in, hopefully before the summer's done.
I don't know what choice we have.
It's a terrible interim, I mean, it's a major intersection.
If there's any intersection in the township where you can't have a life failing, that's probably the one.
And even, even what Mr. Bruner from Traffic Control has said is that when this work's going on, he needs two people directing traffic in that intersection because that intersection's so busy, so.
Okay, is your motion?
I'll make a motion that we do what the, we undertake the proposed emergency repair to the Route 19 signal.
I'll second, I'll third that.
All right, any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a nice signal there. All right, next item is payroll of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I review the payroll and bills. Note, there is the check for the VFW ambulance contribution, $109,134 in the budget, as approved in the budget. I move that we approve the bills as submitted.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondents? Reports? Anybody here to discuss anything on reports?
I have a question about the part-time police. There was a police report that said that our part-time person, excuse me, one of our part-time was promoted to full-time and we were going to potentially look for other part-timers.
And we have, and we have put a conditional offer of employment out to a part-time police officer.
Well, my question was related to the whole program that Chief Rhymes had brought in about trying to recruit people who had retired from other positions.
And we continue to try to do that.
Okay, because we've done that and then those all have been either sucked up into full-time or other jobs and just wondered whether he was still pursuing that option.
Oh, we are because we continue, those, those people that we bring in, bring to our department experience and credentials that we can't get elsewhere. So, like for instance, the most recent part-time offer is to a lieutenant in the state police department who brings with him a world of experience that's beyond anything that our officers would have, so.
And I'm not criticizing, I just wondered if that was still leading.
We are, and it's getting harder to find them.
I was just gonna say, I thought I read an article in the Observatory Report, it was talking about shortage of police officers, that Cadizburg or someone had a, you know, was expecting like 30 applicants for their police academy or something, they only got 10.
Yeah, e- even in the Southwest area, council governments does an annual hiring for most of the, testing for most of the Southwest community, they're getting a fraction of applicants in comparison to what they used to get.
I don't understand how the sheriff keeps getting all these new deputies. I mean, they have to be coming from someplace. I don't know.
Did you write them?
No, forget about it.
All right. Ms. Lainey?
Yeah, there are four items. One, we'd like to set March 23rd.
24th.
24th, excuse me, for a public hearing date for change to the zoning order into the planning department fees, so unless council objects, we're gonna do that.
Prior to a council meeting?
Yes. We have a council workshop next Monday.
Monday with the school district.
To meet with the school board.
And it's at their offices, right?
Yes, if you have anything you'd like on that agenda, you could let me know.
Well, you did, you and Monica.
Yes.
Can you hand that?
It's a, it's a public meeting.
It's an open meeting, yes.
The letters that were penned by Mr. Ball with regard to state police protection and municipalities are included. And finally, there's a, a letter that I forwarded to you about the local emergency management coordinator meeting. That was addressed to council. It was clarified that who they want there is our emergency management coordinator. So, if you want to attend, I'm sure you're welcome, but Mr. McGlocken will be attending on behalf of the township.
Good.
What's up, Doc?
Couple of things that I brought up some time ago, and I guess I'm just rekindling them as to whether anything's happened or we've done it. One of them was a suggestion that we work with students in the community relative to Cub Cadet with the state police department. I don't know whether any efforts.
Actually, that's moving forward. The chief has actually identified somebody from within the department who is going to participate from our department, and they're in the process of attempting to recruit kids for that, that program.
I think it's a great program, and I'm probably remiss for not having brought it up in prior years. And then in anticipating a question relative to the agricultural district and the proceeding that needs to occur with it, do we have a plan?
Well, we're gonna, we, we wanna approach this on two bases. One, we have to update the agricultural security district, and as I had stated to the council previously, this is more a definition of a geographic area. But I think the other thing that we wanna do, and Mr. Zook and I have been talking about this, we wanna invite in the people who represent the major farms in town.
I think they're waiting for that invitation.
Well, and, and just last week, Mr. Simmons was in to see Ed, but we wanna invite the people from Simmons Farm and Beemount Farm and Trax Farm to come meet with us, not about the agricultural security district, but to talk to them about what it is we can as a municipality be doing to help them. I'm not quite sure what that is. I'm sure they have some ideas, and so that meeting's gonna occur. I just can't tell you when.
Just an encouragement of the dialogue, that's all.
Anything else, council?
Mr. Chairman, if I could take a minute, as you all probably know, the Old Venetia School is located on Venetia Road, and the Venetia Heritage Society purchased that from the school district a while back, many years ago. They do have a membership program that they are trying to promote, and I would just like to encourage anyone who's interested in potentially seeing that building renovated and recreated into something more viable, to consider becoming a member of the Venetia Heritage Society. It's $20 individual, $35 for a family. Membership doesn't really get you anything yet. It's more about the idea that you're contributing towards the renovation of the school. They also have donations they're accepting for their capital campaign. That is, the building has the potential to be a good viable new center, particularly with the development that's going on in that area. You don't have to live in the 15367 zip code. Everybody's welcome. Everybody's welcome to go ahead and donate or be a member. So I'd just like to put that out there. They do have a website. If you carry them online, Venetia, Venetia Heritage Society, invite out a little bit more about the building and what their ideas are.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on miscellaneous items for next agenda? Nothing in particular? Okay, well, we are adjourned. We have an executive session which will concern a legal matter and personnel matter.